Meeting number 50 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Remi, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is grateful to have Pastor Julianne Smek of Hope Lutheran Church to pray with us. Pastor, welcome to council.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let us pray. Gracious God, we ask that you bless this city. Make it a place of safety for all people, rich and poor, old and young. Give us grace to work together so that all the neighborhoods in Columbus can become and remain vibrant and whole. Help these leaders hear the concerns of communities in food deserts. Reveal ways we can truly help those who are lost and forgotten. And we pray for this council. Bless their efforts to keep seniors in their homes. Work through their decisions to help those in need and to open doors of opportunity to those for whom they've been closed. We remember people who are vulnerable to losing what they have, not of their own fault, but because of systems that define progress apart from people. We ask, Lord, that the people on this council will be mindful of all these people as they talk and as they plan. Remind us, remind us all, council and citizens alike, of the sacred worth of each person. And finally, we pray for the natural environment in which we live. Let the decisions made here be done so, in a way that's mindful of the soil, the trees, the air, that each part of your creation may be given the attention and protection needed. We pray with thankful hearts and hope. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorrance, Favor, Green, Remi Weiss, President Harden. Any person who takes any action to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
May I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorrance, Favor, Green, Remi Weiss, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be written to the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll go around the dais for announcements and resolutions from my colleagues, starting with Councilmember Bangston.
Thank you, Council President Harden. I'm going to invite Director Orth to come up at this time. As we have said, as we continue to navigate through the cybersecurity incident, we will continue to have our briefing by our director of the Department of Technology, as well as the city attorney's office. They have any updates, and we'll force as well. At this time, I will turn it over to Director Orth.
Good evening, President Harden, President Protem Dorrance, Chair Bangston, and members of council. Tonight, I wanted to give you a brief update since we last met on October 7th. As we've discussed, the cyber attack remains a critical issue and is our department's primary focus. Our team, along with external cybersecurity experts, has been working diligently in an effort to gain an understanding of what happened, to harden and restore our systems, and to support Columbus residents and all impacted individuals with Experian Identity Theft Protection Services. Sadly, Columbus is not alone in this fight against cybercrime, with 50 cities facing cyberattacks in 2024 and over 10,000 confirmed data breaches in the U.S. this year alone. These criminals are sophisticated and continue to evolve their tactics in attacking businesses and governments across the country. Our dedicated team continues investigating how the cybercriminals infiltrated our systems. We've also deployed a highly experienced team to assess identified stolen data. As we've shared in previous updates, early findings confirm that the criminals assessed and exposed personally identifiable information, and in response, we issued a broad notification on August 16, 2024, after notifying employees by mail on August 6, providing Experian's Identity Theft Protection Services to city employees, residents, and others who have interacted with the city and the municipal court. We continue to encourage all past and present city employees, as well as Columbus residents and non-residents whose personal information was provided to the city of Columbus via things like city building access, the criminal justice system for defendants, witnesses, victims, those who contacted the city for service provisions such as police, fire, water, and sewer, and city vendors and suppliers, or the Franklin County Municipal Court, who were parties to litigation, to enroll in Experian's Identity Theft Protection Services. These services, free to enrollees, include two years of credit monitoring with all three credit bureaus, dark web monitoring, identity restoration services, and up to $1 million in identity theft insurance. Dark web monitoring alerts individuals whose information is found on the dark web, regardless of whether it relates to this incident. Enrollment instructions can be found at columbus.gov/cyber. As of October 19, over 16,500 people have enrolled with Experian. We remain committed to restoring our systems with added support from outside experts. Our focus since the last council meeting has been restoration of internet service, which remains our number one priority. We've also restored five additional systems and remediated most of our most important applications. In conclusion, cybercrime is a widespread issue affecting governments, businesses, and citizens across the country, and Columbus is no exception. We're committed to recovering from this attack, supporting our residents, and strengthening our technological infrastructure. Thank you for your patience and your ongoing support. That concludes my testimony this evening. Now being mindful that we still have an ongoing criminal investigation, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for that, Director. Now, the last time we were together, we were targeting for, and it's a moving target, for most, if not all, of our systems to be restored by the end of October. Could you just give us an update as to what systems are still out there, or the percentage of them in, where we are with that goal?
President Harden, Chair Bangston, President Protem Dorrance, members of council. We are still working diligently, as you indicated, as an ongoing and a moving target. We have restored 74% of our systems at this point in time. And as I mentioned, our focus right now, our primary focus, is restoration of the internet. I really can't give you a timeline on that, but I hope to have that done very soon. So stay tuned for that. We're doing everything we can to get through the remaining systems. I think it's important to emphasize that we kind of looked at all our systems and have stood up the most critical ones for the city that the city departments use the most. And those are all up and operational at this point in time. The ones that are remaining are the less-used systems at this point. That doesn't mean that they're not important. Certainly, they are important. We will continue to do everything we can to get them online as soon as we can.
Thank you for that, Director. And I know that, you know, many questions have been asked of us, and of course, we want to make sure that we're making informed decisions and asking questions. I know we're still waiting on a full report, well, let's just say initial report from Dinsmore. Could you give us an update on where Dinsmore is with that report?
President Harden, President Protem Dorrance, Chair Bangston, members of council. The forensic work is, you know, it's still ongoing. There's still information coming in that is informing that report. As we discussed two weeks ago, there are a variety of contractors working with Dinsmore on that forensics work. It's extremely important, given the serious nature of this crime and the impact that it's had this city, to get that report done right. We're committed to doing that. That work still remains ongoing at this point in time. Certainly, as I mentioned, I think two weeks ago, we expect to have it before the end of the year or sooner when it is done. That's really all I can tell you at this point in time.
Okay, thank you for that. And again, that is our top priority as a council, so that we can have a formal public hearing to be able to ask the necessary questions. Are there any further questions or comments from my colleagues? All right, thank you. Seeing none, thank you, Director.
Thank you, members of council. Thank you, Director.
And Council President is all I have this evening.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Councilmember Barosa de Padilla.
Thank you, Council President. I just have two quick announcements, and they're both appreciation. First, to Columbus Fashion Week on celebrating 15 years of Fashion Week. It was an awesome week. I know many of my colleagues had an opportunity to come to different parts of Fashion Week. Folks didn't know, we are right behind New York and LA in terms of opportunities for fashion designers right here in the city of Columbus. It's an industry that we want to continue to invest in, and that's why we support Fashion Week. And so I just wanted to say congratulations to those folks. We also had the Second Annual Curvy Show, which was bigger and better than last year. So again, congratulations. And then, secondly, we wanted to show appreciation for Latino Heritage Month. We had our last event also this weekend with an art show with our partners at Blockfort. It was actually an outdoor block party. And we want to thank the Cultural Arts Center, the Columbus Museum of Arts, and all of our local Latino artists that also were a part of making the art show a success. And I just want to thank the Latino Heritage Month Committee on all of the events that we were able to accomplish together this year, including a certification event with our Department of Diversity and Inclusion. Thank you, Director Jenkins. And also with the Central Ohio Worker Center, we held a really important session on knowing your rights for Latino workers. So can't wait for next year, already starting to plan. So it was a great weekend in Columbus.
Thank you, Councilmember. I told Councilmember today that I drove past that festival, and it was bumping on a Friday evening, so good job, thank you. Councilmember De Akauer.
Thank you, Council President. I first would like to thank all the members of our Getting Grant Ready Academy cohort for coming to City Hall last week and officially kicking off the program. We heard some inspiring stories from amazing nonprofit participants, and I'm extremely excited to watch them grow throughout the next year as they learn the tools needed to go after more funding and help expand the great work that they're already doing in our community. Secondly, with Veterans Day approaching, I'd like to extend an invitation to veterans in our community to come and join us for our first-ever Veterans Day softball game. This event will take place at Burnliner Sports Park at Diamond 7 on Veterans Day, November 11, from 12 to 4 p.m. Veterans and community members will compete in a friendly softball game, and families and the community are all invited to come and support the teams, as well enjoy some delicious food and beverage from veteran-owned food trucks. And there'll also be resources available from veteran-focused organizations in the community. So please, if you are a veteran or you want to support our veterans, come down and participate, have fun, and celebrate Veterans Day with veterans. And then lastly, I want to thank my analyst, Marwa Wusame, and all the staff and community members who helped this weekend to make our luncheon for the Fourth Annual North American-Somali Elected Officials Conference a big success. We had the honor of welcoming to our city Somali elected officials from across the U.S. and Canada, and also the Somali Ambassador to the United States. It was a great opportunity to highlight why Columbus is a great place to live and do business. And that is all for me. Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Press Protem. Councilmember Favor.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Just one brief announcement. The Housing Homelessness and Building Committee will be hosting a hearing focused on the remaining housing initiatives that include rent increase notification, accessory dwelling unit, or the ADU pilot program, wholesaler regulation, and rental registry. Additionally, we will share some exciting results from a commissioned study that was done on a previously passed initiative, as well as here two other pieces of legislation related to housing being put forward by the Department of Development, which include notice of inspection at point of sale and an eviction bond. Furthermore, this hearing will include an update to the fee schedule from the Building and Zoning Services team. This hearing will take place on Tuesday, November 12, at 5 p.m. in council chambers. You can also watch this hearing on our city's YouTube and Facebook pages. To provide written or to sign up to provide a three-minute testimony during the hearing, please email my legislative analyst, Kendra Asaidu, at k-n-a-s-i-e-d-u@columbus.gov with the subject line, "November 12 Housing Hearing Testimony," with your name, address, and which legislative piece you would like to speak on by noon on November 12. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Green. Thank you. Councilmember Remi.
Thank you very much, Council President. Tonight, I am proud to present Resolution 0277X, 2024, to honor and recognize the Alzheimer's Association Central Ohio Chapter as they promote awareness of the disease. I'd like to invite our guests from the association up to the podium now. So on October 13, the Alzheimer's Association held the Columbus Walk to End Alzheimer's. The Alzheimer's Association leads the way to end Alzheimer's and all other dementia by accelerating global research, driving risk reduction and early detection, and maximizing quality care and support. Ending Alzheimer's means providing our loved ones with as much dignity, comfort, and independence in their lives as possible for as long as possible. Now, I'd like to turn it over to our guests, if you wouldn't mind saying a few words and introduce your team there.
Hello, everyone. My name is Matthew Austin, and I'm a walk manager for the Central Ohio Chapter. I'd like to introduce our policy advocate, Cameron Harris, and our volunteer, Kelly Purnell, and our executive director, Vince McGrail. We were welcomed to have our Columbus Walk to End Alzheimer's on the 13th. We welcomed over 3,000 individuals to the lawn at CAS, and we are right now sitting at $975,000 raised, which is the most successful year we've ever had. It's been an exciting time for Alzheimer's research. We've now welcomed multiple FDA-approved treatments, and we have other things coming down the line around blood testing and potentially biomarkers and other exciting things to help improve the quality, not only of people facing Alzheimer's disease, but caregivers and their families. So thank you very much for recognizing us today and all of the work that we've done to advance the cause of our mission, a world free of Alzheimer's and dementia. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't think there's a person sitting on this dais or anyone in this room that doesn't have a family or friend that is afflicted with either Alzheimer's or dementia. So we appreciate the work, we appreciate the commitment to research, and we appreciate hopefully the fight to end this altogether. So with that, are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening?
Thank you.
I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorrance, Favor, Green, Remi Weiss, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you, Council President. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you, Council President. I have one resolution tonight, but one quick reminder as well. As I mentioned, council, the county, and Tech Core have partnered on this year's Tech Core Hack on November 16. There's still time to sign up to participate. We have over 100 students already signed up, but this is a free opportunity for those who may not have had opportunities to learn coding and mobile app development. It's free to participate, no experience necessary, and there is a cash prize for the winners. This event would only be possible without volunteers, and we have about 300 students in Columbus alone. So if you know any folks who, whether they are into tech or not, we need volunteers. So please have them go to techcore.org/hackathon to sign up and volunteer. At this time, I'd like to invite Jake Heffron, Rumkey's municipal specialist, to the podium, and any guests who may be joining him. As he comes forward, I'd like to introduce Resolution 0273X to recognize and celebrate October 14 through the 20th, 2024, as Recycle Week in Columbus, Ohio. Rumkey has opened their new Resource and Recycling Center, the largest and most technically advanced recycling facility in North America. This center is vital in creating a circular economy, meeting our Climate Action Plan goals, and keeping Columbus clean of litter. Jake, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Weiss, and good evening, members of council and President Harden. As you stated, my name's Jake Heffron, and I'm municipal public sector specialist for Rumkey. I work closely with the Public Service Department to ensure the efficiency and effectiveness of the weekly recycling program in Columbus is up to date and going well. So like Councilmember Weiss stated, our new MRF has opened our material recovery facility in June of this year. Many of you have been there already, and I know Lisa Griffin, our Public Affairs Manager, is here tonight and is working with the rest of the staff to make sure that everyone gets out and see it. Our website is up and running, and anyone who does want to come take a tour is more than welcome to sign up at rumkey.com and schedule a tour there as well. Pleased to let council know that since we started weekly recycling last year, we have seen a 10% increase in the amount of material coming to our facility. So very proud to see the results there. Last month alone, we saw over 2,500 tons of recycling material come to our facility from the city of Columbus. So very proud of the program you guys have built here and the continuation of what is to come. Our new facility has the capacity to process 250,000 tons of material a year. So we built this facility with the growth of Columbus in mind. And with this technology advances as well, we were able to capture 98% of the material that comes in there. So if you're putting recycling in your recycling bin, 98% of that is getting sent to an end user. So you can feel very confident that recycling is getting recycled. Finally, I just wanted to touch on something exciting that we're coming out with. Many of you have probably heard already, but starting November 1st, we are accepting clamshells in your blue recycling bins. So those are your strawberry containers, your raspberry containers, blueberry containers, your cherry tomato containers. Those clear plastic clamshell-type containers can now go in your recycling bin. So Rumkey is very proud to continue to advance the recycling programs for the city and central Ohio communities along like that, and happy to answer any questions you have. And if not, then thank you for your time tonight. I'm proud of our partnership with the city going forward. So thank you.
Jake, thank you for being here and providing that update on new opportunities around cycling. I saw some surprise looks because I'm pretty sure a lot of people have already been putting those in the recycle bin, and so now they'll be recycled, everybody who was surprised. And I know a number of us have had an opportunity to visit the center. We did produce a video with CTV that will roll out once that is finalized. But to my colleagues, I don't know if any of you have any questions, comments? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorrance, Favor, Green, Remi Weiss, President Harden.
Adopt it.
That is all I have.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. I want to start my announcements by acknowledging that last week, our community lost one of our leaders in Kurt Moody. He was the founder of Moody Nolan, the largest black architecture firm in the United States, founded right here in Columbus. You may not know Kurt Moody, but you certainly know his work. If you have been to Huntington Park here in Columbus, or if you've been to the MLK branch of the library, or the AC Hotel in Bridge Park, and when we all eventually visit the new terminal of the John Glenn Airport being built, those are all now physical legacies that Mr. Moody leaves behind. Many of us know his designs at the Ohio State University, like the Ohio Union and the Jesse Owens Memorial Stadium. But what he was most proud of is some of his work for HBCUs, like Central State and my own alma mater, Morehouse College. Curtis was outspoken about design and the built environment, but also about race and integrity and leadership. So as we honor his legacy and send our prayers to his family, his sons and his wife, I ask that council pause for a moment of silence for Mr. Kurt Moody. Thank you. Next, I am truly excited to offer this resolution. And as I'm reading this resolution, I'd like to invite up someone who certainly does not need introduction in terms of making you familiar about her, because we all know her. Would Colleen Marshall come forward? You may be surprised by looking at her and, you know, that we are celebrating her 40th anniversary of reporting news in central Ohio. We thought it was really important to honor Ms. Colleen tonight. I say this often when we have folks who are retiring from the city government, that right now, we live in a really interesting time where folks don't trust institutions. They don't trust government, they don't trust news and those who speak truth and push back on misinformation. For more than 40 years, Colleen Marshall has been doing that in central Ohio, and in some crazy way, has been able to be one of those folks that people still trust. That is incredibly important. These institutions, specifically government and the media, really are fundamental to our democracy, to holding us accountable for what we say, to make sure there is no wrongdoing, for reminding us of our moral compass. And in central Ohio, for the last 40 years, that has been Colleen Marshall's work. So we all know her, we've all seen her in our living rooms, but I don't know if everyone knows about the work, her heart work, the work that she does on issues as sensitive as the LGBTQ community and HIV/AIDS, on topics as personal to her as her own mother's battle with Alzheimer's, or that she cares so deeply for humans at the center of her reporting and that she treats all people with dignity. We thank you, Colleen, for being the conscience of our city, even as you cause lots and lots of trouble for those of us leading it sometimes. But before I move for passage, I want to ask my colleagues if they have anything to say. Again, of all of us who have grown up in this community, all of us who are watching tonight, you are family. You are family. But again, this moment in time where folks are losing trust, I think you help hold on to it just a little while longer, and for that, I'm grateful. Do my colleagues have any more? Councilmember Favor.
I would echo what Council President said, and you and I have had an opportunity to chat on many different occasions. And I think in the spirit of people being untrusting of institutions and looking for the next gotcha moment, especially when it comes to media, you have been dialed in and just getting into the heart of whatever story you're assigned to cover. And I appreciate that because trust is a relationship that works both ways. And when you're able to make the person on the other side feel comfortable and to know that what they are sharing is going to be reported back with good care, with the utmost respect, then we feel like the work that we are doing is absolutely getting to the folks on the other side of the screen. And that's what we want at the end of the day, is to be able to convey those messages the best way that we can. And every time I've had the opportunity to sit down with you, you've absolutely captured exactly what the intent is behind the work that we are doing, and that is so incredibly important. So thank you for the level of respect for elevating journalism in Columbus and helping to create a new generation of journalists who are going to look up to you to be the pathway forward. So thank you for your work.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Barosa de Padilla.
So, Colleen, I didn't get to tell you this story after you won Women of
So, Colleen, I didn't get to tell you this story after you won Women of Achievement last year. You and I had an opportunity to talk for a second, but I would be remiss if I didn't tell you this. When I was running, your show was the one that I was probably most nervous to do. This was during COVID, so thankfully, I was in my own house. But you definitely set the tone and definitely was helpful in giving me, you know, even as a woman coming into our own, in this space, in this platform, being encouraging. But I have to tell you that of all the things that I have done, without a doubt, being on your show was the thing that my Cuban mother was most proud of. You would have thought I sat down with Oprah. She was--she thought it was amazing. She was very sad she could not record it, but I think it just goes to show, I think, to what people are talking about. I mean, I think for many people, even though we digest news differently, for so many people, you were still in their living rooms every day, going through the good and the bad and celebrating and sharing truth and pushing people and sharing these moments with people, and you become part of their history. And you certainly are a part of the history of Columbus, but certainly for people in their homes, I think that when they think about their life, you're part of that, and what a special place to be and what an honor that is. And thank you for being part of so many of the moments that we've all had growing up together in this community.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
So I'm going to date myself a little bit because I remember the days of Doug Adair and Mona Scott.
Me too.
And of course, a younger--a young reporter who started out in that era as I was growing up, but you've really, you know, you're that voice of--that voice of familiarity, the voice of reason, the voice that we ask to invite into our homes every single night, and it certainly is appreciated, the commitment that you've made to this Columbus community. We all, I think today, more than ever, are looking for a sense of continuity and, you know, familiarity, and so for you to be that person every single night means a lot to this community, and we're so blessed to have you. Hopefully, it's for many more years to come, but we certainly appreciate you and the work that you do at NBC4. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll turn the floor over to Ms. Colleen Marshall.
Well, that's hard to follow. President Harden, I want to thank you so much. This is quite an honor. And to all of the members of City Council, at least I like to think this is going to be a unanimous vote. That's what I've been telling myself. I'm so pleased and honored to be able to speak to the people of Columbus each and every day. This is a job I always wanted since junior high, to be a reporter. It only works when people who are on the other end of the microphone are also willing to be honest and open and transparent. I'd like to thank all of you, and I have--I think I've interviewed most of you. Thanks to all of you for allowing me to stick a microphone in your face, but thanks to NBC4 for supporting me. This really is--this is marking longevity, and I like to think it was time well spent. And I've seen this city grow. I like to think I've grown professionally with it, but it's only because of the people and because of lawmakers and leaders like yourselves who we turn to every day for answers. So thank you all, and I thank you very much. Thank you.
To help Columbus celebrate 40 years of excellent community service, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa, De Padilla, De Akhauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
My only other announcement is that early voting is ongoing in Columbus and across Ohio, and for those living in Franklin County, you can vote early at the Franklin County Board of Elections, including the next two weekends, and of course, on Election Day, which is Tuesday, November 5th, and polls are open from 6:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. So please, 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 remember, it is our responsibility to vote. Are there any comments by our elected officials, City Attorney's Office, Auditor, Clerk, Treasurer's Office? At this time, I request the following ordinance to be removed from the Consent Action portion of the agenda. Health and Human Service and Equity Committee, ordinance is 2429-224, as well as 2430-2024. Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the Consent Action portion of the agenda? Hearing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of titles of 30-day legislation by the clerk. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa, De Padilla, De Akhauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Thank you. Clerk, will the clerk now read the record, the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Yes. In Finance and Governance, we have Resolution 247X-2024. Ordinance is 2638, 2660, 2666, 2669, 2691, 2715, 2746, and 2823-2024. In Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee, we have ordinances 2658 and 2800-2024. In Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have ordinances 2674, 2699-2024. Neighborhoods, Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 2475, 2479, 2486, 2490, 2491, 2493, 2765, and 2854-2024. In Homeless--Housing, Homelessness and Building Committee, we have ordinances 2332, 2604-2024. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinance 2696-2024. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinance is 2454, 2516, 2544, 2556, 2564, 2566, 2567, 2569, 2670--I'm sorry, 2574, 2576, 2583, 2585, 2586, 2589, 2595, 2611, 2623, 2627, 2647, 2677, 2698, 2702, 2704, 2720, 2728, 2729, 2733, 2745, 2786-2024. In Rules and Policy Committee, we have--I'm sorry, in Zoning Committee, we have 2774, 2815, and 2825-2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We don't have any speakers on the first reading portion of the agenda, so the following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Yes. We have Resolution of Expressions, 20--I'm sorry, 287X-2024, 283X-2024, 284X, 285X, 286X, 288X, 272X, 275X, 280X, 281X, 282X, and 279X-X-2024. Finance and Governance Committee, ordinance is 2434, 2443, 2450, 2535, 2616, 2639, 2648, 2717, 2744, 2766, 2796, 2806, and 2824-2024. In Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee, we have ordinances 2420, 2432, 2581, 2794, 2801, 2852, and 2853-2024. In Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have ordinances 1632, 2495, 2552, 2559, 2560, 2571, 2572, 2577, 2609, 2617, 2693, and 2740-2024. Neighborhoods, Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 2488, 2492, and 2780-2024. Workforce Education and Labor Committee, ordinance is 2668 and 2790-2024. Housing, Homelessness and Building Committee, ordinance is 2471, 2588, 2619, 2620, 2622, 2632, 2634, 2635, and 2657-2024. Health, Human Services and Equity Committee, we have ordinance is 2429, 24--I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go back. Ordinance is 2431-2024, 2661, 2678, 2778-2024. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinance is 2590, 2592, 2626, 2675, 2721, 2737, Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, we have Resolution 233X-2024. Ordinance is 2356, 2494, 2508, 2555, 2582, 2641, 2676, 2682, 2683, and 2685-2024. Appointments from the mayor, we have Appointment A0173, 174, 175, 176, 177, 180, 181-2024. And then one number correction for Finance and Governance, ordinance 2776-2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any questions or concerns with the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, may I have a motion of approval of these items and their consent?
Remove.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa, De Padilla, De Akhauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White. Yep, five boys, we're doing it? Okay. Bangston?
Yes.
Barrosa, De Padilla?
Yes.
De Akhauer?
Yes.
Doran's?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Green?
Yes, with the exception of ordinance 2648-2024, which I abstain.
Remy?
Yes.
White? President Harden?
Yes. Ordinance passed with the noted exception. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day postponed emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance and Governance Committee, chaired by Councilmember Bangston. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight in the Finance and Governance Committee for second reading, we have ordinance 2462-2024 to appropriate $1 million within the income tax set-aside fund to authorize the transfer of $150,000 within the Information Services Operating Fund to authorize the Director of Finance and Management on behalf of the Department of Technology and various city agencies to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract/purchase agreement with Brown Enterprise Solutions LLC and Law &amp; Order Technologies LLC for the procurement of computers and computer-related products to authorize the expenditure of $1,688,000 from the income tax set-aside sub-fund and the Department of Technology Information Services Operating Fund for the above stated purposes. This is an annual piece of legislation for the procurement of desktop computers and computer-related products. Brown Enterprise Solutions will supply the city with standard PCs and laptops, while Law &amp; Order Technology will supply certain departments with rugged laptops for mobile use. Brown Enterprise Solution is a minority business enterprise. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa, De Padilla, De Akhauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2645-2024 to authorize the city treasurer to modify its contract for banking services with Huntington Merchant Services to add additional funding to authorize the expenditure of $2,275,000 and to declare an emergency. In 2020--in 2013, the city entered into a 10-year banking services contract with Huntington Merchant Services. In 2022, council authorized the treasurer's office to extend its contract with Huntington Merchant Services for merchant processing beyond its original 10-year term to accommodate the expansion of banking to include gateway services for online payments. This ordinance modifies the contract with Huntington Merchant Services to add $2,275,000 in funding to ensure the continued ability of the Department of Utilities and Fleet Management to process credit card payments. The city treasurer's office is in the midst of transitioning its merchant services and gateway solutions from Huntington Merchant Services to FISER, First Data, to a new banking partner. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa, De Padilla, De Akhauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance 2701-2024 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract with Buyers Mittens and Associates LLC for a consulting services contract related to state government relations to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code, Chapter 329, to authorize the expenditure of $60,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. Buyers Mittens and Associates has partnered with the city for several years in regards to state government relations. This involves developing a comprehensive public policy agenda for state government that advances the interests of the city, monitoring all legislation and executive agency decisions at the state level that impact the city of Columbus, developing and strengthening working relationships with statewide officials and legislative leadership, and much more. This ordinance is an annual contract with them and continues--is a continuation of the services they are providing. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa, De Padilla, De Akhauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. May I move to the Economic Development and Small Minority Business Committee?
Please.
Thank you. Tonight in the Economic Development and Small Minority Business Committee, we have or--we have Resolution, excuse me, 0250X-2024, to accept the recommendations of the 2024 Columbus Tax Incentive Review Council regarding the continuation modification or cancellation of all property tax incentives based on the evaluation of reporting year 2023 and to declare an emergency. This resolution is a part of an annual process in which the Tax Incentive Review Council, fondly known as the Turk, reviews all of the city's enterprise zone agreements post 1994, community reinvestment area agreements, and tax increment financing districts. Per Ohio Revised Code, the Turk makes recommendations on whether to sustain, revise, or cancel each agreement. The Turk must then submit these recommendations to city council for a vote on whether to accept, reject, or modify these recommendations. This resolution would accept the recommendations, and this is an important mechanism within the economic development process because it is a formal measure for accountability. The Turk meets to ensure that companies receiving city of Columbus incentives are meeting goals regarding job creation, job retention, payroll generation, and capital investment. A few highlights from this year's Turk. There were 123 total active enterprise zone and community reinvestment agreements in 2023. 12,230 jobs were retained in 2023, which represents 120% overall achievement of job retention goals. 6,368 jobs were created, and 3.78 billion were invested in real property improvements through these projects as of 2023. This represents 131% of the achievement of goals. 374.6 million were invested in new job payroll, representing 153% of achievement of goals. I'm going to ask Deputy Director Quentin Harris if he has anything to add, but I just want to highlight that this is something that happens annually. It is open to the public, and it shows that these investments are working, and so I think the numbers really speak for themselves, but more importantly, these are opportunities for our residents, far and above and beyond what these organizations have promised instead that they would create, and so really excited to see the performance that is happening. It shows, again, I think, the strength of our economy and the resilience of our economy here in Columbus. Deputy Director, anything you want to add to the report?
I do not.
All right, that's the shortest. We should have planned that a little better. Sorry about that. But again, just want to thank your team. Again, I want to thank also all the members of the Turk. This is a process that there are representatives from council, from the administration, from school, from our school districts, as well as all other taxing agencies, so I want to thank them all for their time and their due diligence, making sure that we're reaching out, we're holding folks accountable, that if you are going to take taxpayer dollars, that you're going to do what you say that you're going to do with them. With that, if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage. I'm sorry, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa, De Padilla, De Akhauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have in my committee this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee, chaired by Councilmember Barrosa De Padilla. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. I have two ordinances in Public Service--
I have two ordinances in public service and transportation today. The first ordinance is twenty-seven thirteen, twenty-two forty-four, to authorize the Director of Public Service or Designee to enter into a necessary administrative and maintenance or operations agreements with the Central Ohio Transit Authority, or CODA, relative to the roadway Linkus West Broad Street Corridor BRT project, a nine-point-three-mile mobility infrastructure project to improve transit along the Broad Street Corridor, to authorize the Director of Public Service or Designee to waive application fees for permits controlled by the Department of Service, of public service, and applied for by CODA and/or its contractor relative to the roadway Linkus West, uh, Broad Corridor BRT project and to declare an emergency. This, uh, agreement outlines responsibilities each will assume during the final design, right-of-way acquisition, construction, and post-construction phases of the aforementioned project. As a reminder for folks, this is a nine-point-three-mile mobility infrastructure project to improve transit service along West Broad Street Corridor, consisting of bus rapid transit and up to seventeen enhanced BRT stations between Rock Brook Crossing Avenue, Doughtery Road, and Washington Avenue, including segments off Broad Street, along Cleveland Avenue, Long Street, and Washington Street. So Director, I do have, uh, one question about this, just for the sake of clarity for, um, folks who are watching and, and who might be paying attention to our agenda this evening. So this is only one piece of the Linkus project. Can you share with folks, uh, that might be wondering why we are moving forward with this segment of the Linkus, uh, project while we are still waiting for funding that is yet to be determined about other parts of it? And then as a follow-up, um, if you could also share, uh, what is the project schedule and what is to come along that corridor?
Uh, good evening, President Harden, Chair Barrosa de Padilla, other members of council. As you all know, Linkus is a regional initiative aimed at transforming transit and mobility across central Ohio. Linkus is designed to improve access to jobs, healthcare, education, and other essential services while promoting walkable and connected communities. The council action tonight simply allows us to enter into agreements with CODA and keeps us moving toward completion of the West Broad Street Bus Rapid Transit Line, the first of three planned premium transit lines to be delivered as part of the Linkus program. With the federal funding that the region has already been able to secure for this project, it will help, you know, that will be the reason why it's continuing to advance alone. Additionally, Linkus will build more than five hundred miles of sidewalks, bikeways, trails, with the average, um, amount of sixty million dollars dedicated annually to improve our infrastructure for pedestrian safety and walkable communities throughout Columbus and the region. Importantly, it improves central Ohio's infrastructure to help grow our economy while supporting the existing neighborhoods. The second part of your question had to do with the schedule, and they are advancing right now, West Broad Street is through what, um, Central Ohio Transit Authority is saying ninety percent plans, and they're gonna start, you know, looking at right-of-way acquisitions soon, and they're looking towards a twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, construction year.
Perfect, thank you. I just wanted to be clear with folks because as we continue to talk about Linkus, I want folks to understand the different segments and what is to come, especially as we continue to talk about it and they'll see pieces and parts of this on our agenda while we're also asking the community to make an investment in the broader Linkus project and an investment in CODA. Do my colleagues have any additional questions? If not, I move for passage.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorrance, Favor, Green, Remy, White. President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Uh, next I have ordinance twenty-eight twelve, twenty-two forty-four, to authorize the city attorney to file complaints and order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fees simple and lesser real estate necessary to timely complete the signals Daring Avenue at South High Street project, to authorize an expenditure of four thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and to declare an emergency. This project consists of replacing the existing traffic signal at the intersection of Daring Avenue at South High Street. Existing ADA compliant pedestrian facilities will be maintained, and any that are impacted or absent will be replaced or installed to full ADA compliance as required. The city's acquisition will help make, improve, or repair certain portions of the public right-of-way located at the intersection of South High Street and Daring Avenue, which will be open to the public without charge. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorrance, Favor, Green, Remy, White. President Harden.
Passed.
And, uh, Council President, may I move to page thirty and rules and reference?
Please.
Thank you. Uh, ordinance twenty-five seventeen, twenty-two forty-four, to enact Chapter one seventy-five of the Columbus City Codes to create the Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs. I move to postpone this ordinance until November eighteenth.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorrance, Favor, Green, Remy, White. President Harden.
Postpone.
Thank you, Council President. It's all from you this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember De Akar. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Um, first to my committee this evening, we have ordinance twenty-four seventy-four dash twenty-two forty-four, to authorize the Director of the Recreation and Parks Department to enter into contract with Burgland Construction Company for the Davis Center Preservation and Stabilization, to authorize the transfer of five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars within the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund, to authorize the amendment of the twenty-two forty-four Capital Improvements Budget, and to authorize expenditure of one million one hundred thousand dollars from the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund. The Davis Center, otherwise known as the Columbus Performing Arts Center, is a historic and highly utilized community art space located in Franklin Park that was originally constructed in the early nineteen hundreds. The building is now in need of stabilization for building preservation and safety. This contract allows the construction company to reinforce the foundation of the building to ensure it remains safe and usable. A ventilation system will be added to move air through the building to alleviate odor and humidity buildup since there are no active mechanicals in the building, and the large theater awning in the rear of the building will be removed while adding security lighting for added safety. Are there any questions or colleagues from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorrance, Favor, Green, Remy, White. President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance twenty-four eighty-one dash twenty-two forty-four, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract with Paving Protectors DBA MND Blacktop for the Hard Surface Program twenty-two forty-four Phase Two project, to authorize the transfer of one million three hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty-five cents within the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund, to authorize the amendment of the twenty-two forty-four Capital Improvement Budget, to authorize the expenditure of one million three hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty-five cents from the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. Recreation and Parks allocates a portion of the capital improvement budget to improve existing hard surfaces and accessibility every year. This project will construct sites designed as part of the annual hard surface improvements design package. The program focuses on the removal and replacement of existing asphalt and concrete surfaces that are highly used by the public, including parking lots, park drives, support courts, and walkways. These improvements ensure safe and easy access to parks and facilities. Areas for improvement are determined by requests from internal staff and three-on-one requests from the public. Requests are then prioritized for action based on their respective scores and feedback from relevant stakeholders. The anticipated project schedule will begin in the fall of twenty-two forty-four and finish in the summer of twenty-two twenty-five. Emergency action is requested due to public safety concerns at these locations as cracked pavement on support courts can lead to injury, and there is a limited window for whether appropriate construction of hard surface improvements prior to the end of twenty-two forty-four. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorrance, Favor, Green, Remy, White. President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have in my committee this evening.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Workforce Education Labor Committee chaired by Press Pro Tim. Press Pro Tim, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight in the Workforce Education Labor Committee, we have ordinance, uh, two-seven-seven-nine dash twenty-two forty-four, to approve the proposed collective bargaining agreement between the City of Columbus and the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council Incorporated, dated September one, twenty-two forty-four through September one, twenty-two seventy-seven, to provide wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment for employees in the bargaining unit as provided in the attachment, uh, and to declare an emergency. Uh, the ordinance approves the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Columbus and the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council Incorporated. Again, those dates being, uh, September first, twenty-two forty-four through September first, twenty-two seventy-seven. All articles of the agreement have been approved by representatives of the city and the union. Uh, all signed agreements will be in file with the Department of Human Resources. Emergency action is recommended, uh, for the expedite implementation of the negotiated clauses because certain provisions of the agreement are effective on a retroactive basis. Uh, did wanna pause and see if any, uh, council colleagues had any questions, uh, specifically about, um, the contract and/or, uh, specifically which employees are covered by this agreement as there is a separate, uh, collective bargaining agreement for our police officers, this is a separate, uh, collective bargaining agreement with, uh, this labor entity for other support staff within, um, the Division of Police. Uh, any questions? Uh, Director Moses, do you have anything you wanted to add? If there are, um, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row. Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorrance, Favor, Green, Remy, White. President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have in my committees at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee chaired by Councilmember Favor. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Harden, tonight in housing, homelessness, and building, we have ordinance twenty-five sixty-five dash twenty-two forty-four, to authorize the city attorney to modify and extend an existing contract with Columbus Next Generation Corporation, and to enter into contract with Habitat for Humanity Mid-Ohio, to assist homeowners throughout the city that are elderly and/or disabled to prepare code violations on their homes, and to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of five hundred thousand dollars within the general fund neighborhood initiative sub-fund. This time, I'd like to pounce, pass this off to Councilmember Dorrance to speak more about this ordinance.
Thank you, Chair Favor. Uh, appreciate that. Uh, as the chair mentioned, this ordinance modifies the service agreement with Columbus Next Gen Corporation for administration of the program, uh, and provides, um, providing exterior home repair, uh, to address code violations primarily for seniors in our community. I did wanna invite the CEO of Habitat Humanity, who's here with us tonight to speak on this as well. Um, as we've mentioned, uh, this service agreement will be adding Habitat Humanity Mid-Ohio as an additional service partner. Uh, the City of Columbus, the city attorney, and Franklin County Environmental Courts have been working to assist homeowners throughout the city that are elderly and/or disabled to repair code violations on their home, um, that are currently in environmental court, um, and have been doing so since prior from the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Uh, repairs range from new roofs, gutters, painting, and sewer line work, porch and, uh, foundation work, cutting down dead trees, overgrown weeds, branches, or other things that would bring a property out of code compliance. Uh, all the contractors that are hired, um, through either one of the service providers are licensed, bond, have BWC insurance, are registered with the City of Columbus. Uh, once repairs are completed, uh, the city code officer that referred the properties to the court system is contacted to make sure, um, the property meets the requirements of the code and the violations are withdrawn. In the past, uh, this work has been primarily been carried out by Next Gen, uh, who also works with local contractors and encourages minority participation as much as possible. Um, I'm very excited that we've been able to expand this work with our new partner, Habitat Humanity, and wanted to invite their new-ish, uh, president and CEO, Brandy Al Isu. Uh, I screwed that up again, didn't I?
Al Isu, yeah, close enough.
I'm really trying to get that one of these times. Um, welcome back to council. I think, um, expanding this work is really important, and one thing that Chair Favor and I talk a lot about is that making sure that we keep roofs over people's heads, um, as we've dealt with so many problems in our community with evictions over the years, and this is a really important way to make sure that particularly for seniors, um, have these kind of code violations resolved, particularly for seniors that are on fixed income. This is why having more providers like you all come on board to be able to provide the service, I think, is incredibly important as a way to make sure that we're keeping, uh, our seniors, you know, able to age in place. But that, I would love to turn the floor over to you.
Excellent, thank you. Good evening. Thanks for inviting me to be a speaker tonight, President Harden, Council President Pro Tim Dorrance, Chairperson Favor, members of council. Um, you know, I'm here first and foremost to express my gratitude for you engaging Habitat as a partner in this incredibly important work. We are striving to be a leader in helping solve the affordable housing crisis through the construction of new homes, but also through the repair, renovation, and rehabilitation of existing homes. This requires robust partnerships and collaborations such as the partnership with BZS and Fort Hayes that was recently announced to build workforce development housing, the partnership with the city's land bank to buy discounted land on which we can build affordable homes, and this, funding for critical home repairs, for which we always have a waiting list at Habitat. I think right now we have about a hundred and fifty people waiting for their application to be reviewed for home repair. We believe that people, helping keep people in their existing homes is just as important as building new homes. I wanna thank you for your leadership and for engaging us as a partner, and I look forward to growing our shared work and connecting people to opportunity and hope through affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. And with that, I will, uh, turn the floor back over to Chair Favor. Thank you.
Thank you, President Pro Tim. Would that we move for passage?
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorrance, Favor, Green, Remy, White. President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance twenty-six thirty-six dash twenty-two forty-four, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into service contract with Benevate Incorporated in an amount up to fifty thousand eighty dollars, to provide for the continued use of neighborly software, including support and training services, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of Columbus City Codes, Chapter three twenty-nine, and to authorize the transfer in expenditure of fifty thousand and eighty dollars. The neighborly, neighborly software has permitted the Housing Division to securely process applications, work remotely, and ensure applicants submit complete information, making it easier for residents to access housing services and for staff to manage their workload. This ultimately leads to better service for our residents. It is currently the only software that meets all of the Housing Division's specific needs in a single user-friendly solution and therefore necessitates waiving the competitive bidding process. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorrance, Favor, Green, Remy, White. President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee chaired by Councilmember Green. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Council President. Tonight, we have one ordinance on second reading, um, in our Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, and that ordinance is ordinance number twenty-three eighty-nine dash twenty-two forty-four, to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept, uh, grant funds from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of three million three hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, and any additional funds from the U.S. Department, from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services for the Ryan White Part A HIV Care Grant Program, to authorize the appropriation of three million three hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, and any additional funds awarded from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department Grants Fund, to authorize the city auditor to transfer appropriations between job classes for the Ryan White Part A HIV Grant, um, Grant Program. The Ryan White, uh, Part A HIV Care Grant's purpose is to improve access to medical care for persons living with HIV and AIDS living in central Ohio, and the goal is that each client will achieve viral suppression, suppression, which improves their quality of life and reduces the risk of spreading the infection. This grant will enhance medical services for both somatic and behavioral health, um, pay for HIV-related doctor visits, mental health services, substance use services, and other services allowable by the grant, and will strengthen the case management and linkage to care programs at CPH. The grant period runs from March first, twenty-two five, to February twenty-eighth of twenty-two six. Um, do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row. Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorrance, Favor, Green, Remy, White. President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Um, Council President and Clerk, with your permission, I'd like to go back, um, to page twenty-one on the consent agenda to ordinances twenty-four twenty, twenty-four twenty-nine dash twenty-two forty-four and twenty-four thirty dash twenty-two forty-four. And then as I, is that okay?
Sure.
And then as I introduce these, I'd like to invite Katie White, our Executive Director of CO AAA, to the podium to speak about the work they're doing with the Age Friendly Innovation Center. Um, so our first ordinance here is ordinance number twenty-four, twenty-four twenty-nine dash twenty-two forty-four, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks Department on behalf of the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging to enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio State University College of Social Work on behalf of Age Friendly Innovation Center in support of the organization's communication and outreach efforts to older residents, as well as their age-friendly and climate-smarter pilot project, and to authorize an expenditure of twenty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-seven cents within the Recreation and Parks Department Grant Fund. Department Grant Fund. This spending will support communication and outreach to older adults and climate resiliency for low-income seniors. This pilot project will result in the development of a toolkit for service coordinators and others to use in affordable housing properties for older adult residents to become more prepared for extreme weather events. Counsel did provide startup funding for this project. And Director White, do you have any updates you could provide for us or some information you wanted to share?
I'd love to. Thank you, Council President, Chair Green, and fellow council members for having us here this evening. Alzheimer's caregivers, code violations, link us. It's a very aging agenda tonight, which, of course, I love. So I'll just keep the party rolling. My name is Katie White. I'm the Director of the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging. I'm joined by my colleague Grant Ames, Director of Government Affairs at COAA, as well as next to me, Doctors Katie Hoop Calhoun and Doctors Holly DeBelco Shoney from the Ohio State University College of Social Work. So I'm here just to share a little bit about our partnerships with Ohio State and, in particular, two studies that we're currently engaged in with Ohio State College of Social Work Age Friendly Innovation Center. I need to also speak to Age Friendly Innovation Center Director into the room, Marisa Sheldon, who was unable to join us tonight but would have been here to provide remarks. I'll just take her extra three minutes, though, and grab the mic for six. So as you'll see in your packet, we are in the final stages of the Weather and Aging Resilience Model, or WARM, for affordable housing. This study is aimed at understanding extreme weather experiences and preparedness of older adults and to understand the role and experience of COAA service coordinators working in low-income housing buildings. The second study is on the COAA Shallow Subsidy Pilot Program. This program provides a monthly payment toward rent for older residents that are being case-managed by COAA and that are paying more than 50% of their income on housing. Study participants have been enrolled and have received payment for five months, which is a critical evaluation milestone. We look forward to learning about the preliminary outcome and impacts that this program has had, though anecdotally, we have heard from members about how life-changing this program has been for them so far. So most evenings I attend counsel, it is in response to a crisis, to an emergency, whether on an individual level or a community member, as we partner on our response for these issues. Happily, this evening, I come truly just to share that not only are we responding to crises on a daily basis, of course, we will continue to do that, but we are also piloting these innovative new programs that we believe will help prevent our older adults and individuals with disabilities from losing their housing, whether from weather-related emergencies or from mass evictions, from different climate disasters, or even in most of the cases, just the ongoing battle for our low-income residents to make ends meet in an ever-more-expensive environment. These projects, as Chair Green mentioned, were spurred through council funding a few years ago. So just wanted to really showcase what a small amount of funding but a huge amount of confidence and trust can do in the community as these projects continue to grow and evolve over the years. The need for assistance far outpaces our funding, with COAA supporting nearly 5,000 older adults and people with disabilities just this year on housing and assistance. We've also provided over 200 older adults with funding directly paid towards their rental. So these are in addition to the research studies, which you have in your packet and which I've spoken about tonight. So as you can tell, we've certainly been busy at COAA. In closing, I'm here to proudly stand beside our partner at Ohio State College of Social Work Age Friendly Innovation Center, who makes community-based participatory research possible and who share in our unwavering dedication to creating a community where it's good to be old and grow old, and to thank all of you for your past, present, and future support, confidence, and funding in the programs and partnerships with COAA. Thank you so much for your time this evening and happy to answer any questions, and my colleagues are as well.
Thank you so much, Director White. I know, you know, it's wild watching the footage from the hurricanes recently and the way that weather events affected the entire population, but I just could not stop thinking about our elderly folks or people that were homebound during the time that couldn't get out. And so I think it really kind of highlights the importance of this work that you're doing here locally so that we can be prepared if and when we see a weather event, hopefully not a hurricane this far into, you know, into this country. But, but yeah, so thank you so much for that work. Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Bangston Barosa de Padilla de Akhawer Dorans, favor Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Wonderful. And then, did you want to say any words about the next one? Or now, save it? Okay. Okey-dokey. So lastly, we have ordinance number 2430-2024 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks on behalf of the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging to enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio State University College of Social Work on behalf of the Age Friendly Innovation Center to conduct an evaluation into the efficacy and sustainability of the shallow rental subsidy pilot program to authorize the expenditure of $9,002.94 within the Recreation and Parks Department Grant Fund. And again, you know, as Director White just mentioned, in 2024, COAA launched a pilot program, providing those shallow rental subsidies for case-managed clients across our eight-county central Ohio region who spend more than 50% of their income on housing. The rationale for this type of assistance is that some households consistently struggle financially but did not require the degree of assistance provided by a deep subsidy to achieve housing security, and this pilot program is seeking to increase housing stability as well as reduce the need for emergency rental assistance among program participants. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barosa de Padilla de Akhawer Dorans, favor Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you so much. That's all for me tonight, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before counsel is the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you very much. Council President Harden, tonight I have three ordinances in Public Safety and Criminal Justice. The first ordinance is 2359-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the Division of Police to enter into contract with PennLink Limited to provide computer software licenses and subscriptions that aid in obtaining and analyzing electronic information crucial to resolving cases, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $117,856.49 from the Law Enforcement Contraband Seizure Fund, and to declare an emergency. Excuse me. PennLink is a computer software investigative tool that takes in historical data from search warrants. The information may come from different electronic sources such as cell phones and social media accounts. The new upgraded system will allow investigators to conduct live monitoring and view conversations in real time with images and videos. The updated system will allow users to map calls and ping locations on suspects. A new sharing feature will also allow users access to a larger database to search and to determine if a suspect is under investigation by other law enforcement agencies. Deputy Director Jan Gerdella, could you explain the waiver of competitive bidding, please?
President Harden, Chair, Remy, members of counsel, the original PennLink system was competitively bid years ago, and as these things go, when you go to upgrade, you use your software, since it's become the standard. And so in this particular ordinance, we are acquiring additional software and appreciate counsel's consideration of the bid waiver and awarding of the contract to PennLink. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barosa de Padilla de Akhawer Dorans, favor Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you very much. Next, I have ordinance 2600-2024 to authorize the Director of Public Safety to enter into a contract with CarisSoft Technology Corporation to renew Celebrite software licenses, to extract evidence from cellular devices, to waive competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, to authorize the expenditure of $243,321.75 from the Law Enforcement Seizure Fund, and to declare an emergency. Many crimes have some link to digital evidence. Due to this fact, most divisional units are using the services of the Police Digital Forensics Unit to obtain evidence from the cellular and other electronic devices. The vendor, CarisSoft Technology Corporation, is a third-party provider of Celebrite Inc. licensed software sold exclusively to law enforcement. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barosa de Padilla de Akhawer Dorans, favor Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
And lastly, I have ordinance 2748-2024 to authorize and direct the Director of Department of Public Safety to enter into contracts with Alina Sherefudanova, DBA Village Ventures LLC, for grant management services and public entity educational service center of central Ohio, serving as administrative agent for the Franklin County Family and Children's First Council for Family Case Management Trauma Services for the REACT program, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $243,793 from the General Government Grant Fund, and to declare an emergency. Village Ventures provides program management, grant management, and data analysis for the BGA Co-Sup React Rapid Response Emergency Addiction Crisis Team, grant that was accepted and funds appropriated by the ordinance 1124-2024. Franklin County Family and Children's First Council provides family case management and trauma services. Such multi-system family case management and trauma services are only available through Franklin County Family and Children's First Council. Family and Children First Councils are established in the Ohio Revised Codes and must have an administrative agent, as they are not an agency on their own, but rather a collaboration of the child-serving agencies as mandated by law. That's a lot of words. Deputy Director Dan G., can you explain the waiver of competitive bidding?
Yes, President Harden, Chair, Remy, members of counsel, again, this is, I think, about the sixth year of this program. The annual grant amount toll is about $1.6 million. Both Village Ventures and the Educational Center of Central Ohio were set up originally, as you had mentioned, as the grant managers and providing the information for. So obviously, it makes sense for us to continue to do so, and I appreciate counsel's consideration of this ordinance.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barosa de Padilla de Akhawer Dorans, favor Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
And that is all I have in Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee this evening. With your permission, Council President, may I move to rules and reference?
Please.
And rules and reference this evening of 2835-2024 to amend Section 2133.07 of the Columbus City Codes pertaining to stunt driving and street takeovers and penalties for violations to correct a technical error by including a definition for the term "vehicle component," to repeal existing Section 2133.07, and to declare an emergency following the post-COVID surge of street racing, stunt driving, and street takeovers throughout the country, creating dangerous activity on public streets. Columbus City Council enacted ordinance 2210-2024, which added a specific prohibition of stunt driving and street takeovers to Section 2133.07 of the Columbus City Codes. However, the version of this amendment that was passed omitted a definition for "vehicle component," a term that was added to the codes but remained undefined in the codes. This amendment will add the missing definition, so there are no further questions about what that means. No other amendments will be added made to the existing language of Section 2133.07. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barosa de Padilla de Akhawer Dorans, favor Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
And that is all I have in rules and reference this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The final committee to come before counsel is the Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, chaired by Councilmember White. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you, Council President. First, I have ordinance 0672-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a contract with Duke's Root Control Incorporated for Sewer Root Control Services for the Division of Sewerage and Drainage in 2024 to waive the competitive bidding provisions of City Code and to authorize an expenditure of $90,000 from the Sewer Operating Sanitary Fund. The Department of Public Utilities has chosen Duke's Root Control for this contract. This company is the only licensed applicator of a non-custome neogenic product. Competitive bidding provisions will be waived since this company is the only entity to have proven safe applications of this chemical. This funding will allow for the treatment of roots and sewer drains for continued sanitation in our city. Let me pause there, seeing if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barosa de Padilla de Akhawer Dorans, favor Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 2365-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to establish a contract with Robert Service Group Incorporated for the Electric Power Systems Maintenance Services and to provide for payment of prevailing wage services to the Department of Public Service Design and Construction Division to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,314,600 from the Electricity, Water, and Sewerage and Drainage Operating Funds. The Department of Public Utilities operates and manages two wastewater treatment plants, a compost facility, a sewer maintenance operations center, sewage and stormwater collection systems, three water treatment plants, a water distribution system, and various electric substations that serve the city of Columbus. This funding will allow for routine maintenance and inspection for safety and quality assurance for various electric power equipment at facilities located within Franklin and Delaware Counties. We'll stop there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barosa de Padilla de Akhawer Dorans, favor Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 2501-2024 to authorize the city auditor to transfer $707,711 between object classes within the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund and to authorize the expenditure of $707,711 from the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for one-time bill credits to be issued as part of the Low Income Water and Sewer Discount Program for 2025 and 2026, and a future Low Income Power Discount Program. The city of Columbus Department of Public Utilities offers a 20% discount on water and sewer consumption charges for qualifying customers through the Low Income Water and Sewer Discount Program. In addition to these credits, the city would like to offer one-time bill credits to Division of Power Low Income customers. These 2025 and 2026 credits will be paid with the remaining American Rescue Plan Act funds. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barosa de Padilla de Akhawer Dorans, favor Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, I have 2521-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to modify and increase the contract with Arcatus US Incorporated for the Sewer System Capacity Model Update 2020 Project, to authorize an amendment to the 2024 capital improvement budget, to authorize a transfer of cash and appropriation within the sanitary bond fund, to authorize an expenditure of up to $2,742.92 from the sanitary bond fund to pay for the contract modification and to declare an emergency. The sewer collection system model is the principal tool used for planning and operations of the city's sewer system and will be enhanced by this update. Updating this tool will minimize and prevent sewer backup and overflows, and is necessary for compliance with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency's consent orders. Deputy Director, can you just speak to the emergency?
President Harden, members of counsel, thank you. The emergency is requested tonight just to avoid any delays or stops for work. This contract is critical for our blueprint program and to continue our modeling to prevent sewer overflows and backups. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barosa de Padilla de Akhawer Dorans, favor Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 2557-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a contract modification and extension with JadeTrack LLC for the Greenspot Program Metrics Platform, to authorize the expenditure of $20,000 split between electricity, water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater operating funds, and to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code. JadeTrack provides the Columbus Greenspot Program with the technology and engagement tools to allow residents and businesses to track the outcomes of their sustainability measures. JadeTrack is the creator and owner of the Greenspot Platform and has the experience to continue providing this service to the residents of the city of Columbus. Therefore, the department has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to continue these services with JadeTrack instead of awarding and designing a new platform. We'll stop there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barosa de Padilla de Akhawer Dorans, favor Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Last, I have ordinance 2578-2024 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management on behalf of the Department of Public Service, Division of Refuge Collection, to enter into contract with Best Equipment Co. Incorporated for purchase of three Labore Automizer HD Right-Hand ASL Garbage Trucks to authorize the waiver of competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,270,282.05 from the Refuge Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. Due to long wait times associated with the procurement of new vehicles and needed repairs of current vehicles, the Division of Refuge Collection does not have enough functional vehicles to fulfill daily operations. This purchase will add operable garbage trucks to the city-owned fleet at a substantial discount while preserving the current schedule for refuse collection. We'll pause there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barosa de Padilla de Akhawer Dorans, favor Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That is all I have for this evening.
Thank you.
Seeing none for the business come for councils, their motion to adjourn. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barosa de Padilla de Akhaur Dorans Favor Green, Reemy Weich, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We have one non-agenda speaker.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Can I get a motion, Smith, for the reading of the Journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the Journal? Hearing none, the Journal is approved. We'll now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Dorance chairs that committee. All members, sir and one. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Before we begin tonight's agenda, first, a little bit of housekeeping. The clerk, please read the numbers of legislation zoning committees evening that require waiver of second reading.
2769, 2755, 2759, 2761, 2762, 2763, and 2770-2024.
Thank you, clerk. I now move to waive second reading and those agenda items read aloud. Is there a second?
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you. Now allow me briefly explain our current rules pertaining to speaking for council on rezonings and variances. We only hear a staff presentation of ordinance that have a disapproval from a recommending body, or if you have a public speaker signed to speak against ordinance. We permit three speakers on each side of an ordinance, three proponents, three opponents. We ask that those speakers limit their remarks to three minutes per the standard rules of city council. Only those who own property within 125 feet that is subject to a council variance are legally able to make comments per the legal advice of city attorney's office. All speakers on a council variance, including city staff, area commissioners, applicants, and members of public, will be sworn in before they give testimony. Representatives in area commission are always to be speaking in an ordinance. You do not need to fill out speaker slip, but we do ask that you alert city staff to put your attention to speak at a hearing. We do not have any public speaker slips for tonight's agenda. I will now swear in city staff. Who stand here, raise your right hand and be sworn in. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth. Nothing but the truth. If you shall answer, it pays a penalty of perjury. If so, please say I do. Could you please let the record reflect that Eastman Johnson with the Department of Building and Zoning Services has been sworn in. First, we have ordinance 2769-2024 to rezone 6955 Harlem Road, being 3.00 plus acres located on the west side of Harlem Road, 400-plus feet north of Central College Road, from R. Royal District to LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District. Site consists of two parcels, each developed with a single-unit dwelling. Proposed rezoning will allow second phase of existing multi-unit residential development on the south consisting of maximum 48 units. Proposal has approval from city staff, Development Commission, the Civic Association in the area, the Rocky Fork Black Lake Accord Panel. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Let's call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next move in the council variances. First, we have ordinance 2755-2024 to grant a variance provisions of section 3332.035R3, residential district 3312.49 required parking 3321.05B1, vision clearance 3321.07B landscaping 3332.05A4 area district lot with requirements 3332.13R3, area district requirements 3332.18D base of computing area 3332.21D building lines 3332.25B maximum side yard required 3332.26B maximum minimum side yard permitted, and 3332.27 rear are the Columbus City Codes for property located at 160 East Barthman Avenue to allow four-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 residential district. Site consists of one parcel developed with a vacant mixed-use building, with the applicant proposing convert the building into four-unit residential housing. A council variance is required because the current district does not permit a four-unit dwelling. The requested variances will enable conversion and rehabilitation of the existing historic building. Proposal has approval from city staff and the South Side Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the finance staff is the finance of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2759-2024 to grant a variance provisions of section 3332.033R2 residential district 3312.49 required parking the Columbus City Codes for property located at 7257 Brentonell Road to allow a type A childcare home with reduced parking in the R2 residential district. Site consists of one parcel developed with a single-unit dwelling, and the requested council variance will allow it to be used as a type A family childcare home. A council variance is required to allow a type A family childcare home. The variance to reduce required parking from eight spots to two spots is also included in this request. The proposal has approval from city staff and the Far East Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. And next move to adopt the finance staff is the finance of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2761-2024 to grant a variance provisions of section 3356.03 C4 permitted uses 3361.02 permitted use of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 1155 West Mountain Street to allow a truck-driving school in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. Site consists of a portion of a parcel developed with a parking lot that previously served and now vacant Cooper Stadium, which is proposed to be redeveloped as a mixed-use development. A council variance is required because the current district does not allow for a proposed truck-driving school. The proposal has approval from city staff and the Southwest Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next move to adopt the finance staff is the finance of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2762-2024 to grant a variance provisions of section 3349.03 permitted use of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 625 East North Broadway to allow an animal shelter in the I Institutional District. Site consists of one parcel developed with an office building. Requested council variance will allow the existing building to be used as an animal shelter. Proposal has approval from city staff and Clintonville Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next move to adopt the finance staff is the finance of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2763-2024 to grant a variance provisions of section 3369.02 permitted uses and 3309.14A height districts of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 378 London Rowport Road to allow collector well building with increased height in the EQ Excavation and Quarrying District. The site consists of one undeveloped parcel, and the council variance is required because the current zoning does not allow for the construction of any building except for farming, agriculture, and truck gardening, excavation of gravel and sand, quarrying of limestone or other rock, temporary processing plants, and a solar energy collection, while the applicant proposes to construct a collector well building. A variance to increase building height is included in the request. Proposal has approval from city staff and the Far South Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the finance staff is the finance of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. And now move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And finally, we have ordinance 2770-2024 to grant a variance provisions of section 3332.06 R. Royal District requirements of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 6955 Harlem Road to allow reduced lot size for single dwelling in the R. Royal District. The applicant has received recommendation of approval from the staff and the Development Commission for concurrent rezoning we heard earlier on tonight's agenda. The requested council variance will allow the remaining tract to be three acres each. A variance is necessary because the current zoning district requires a minimum lot size of five acres. The proposal has approval from city staff, the Civic Association in the area, Rocky Fork Black Lake Accord Panel. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the finance staff is the finance of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council Presidents. All the way up to tonight's zoning agenda.
Seeing no further business come for council, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a motion? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, de Akhawer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned.